I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. I'd like to apologize for the late start. We had some audio and technical difficulties. But I hereby call this city council meeting to order December sixth, twenty twenty-two, and we'll stand and do our flag salute. Ready? Begin.
I would leave just to the by the state of and to the Republic, which is as indivisible, with liberty and justice.
So we're down to our roll call. We have all city councilors present today. So we have no absences. We'll go to our action items with this, which is hiring the city manager standards, criteria, policy, and public comment section. So we've all been given the process and the procedures that we're going to do for our hiring process. So.
The SGR city manager and recruitment brochure and draft timeline as the hiring standards, policy and criteria for the city man. Requirements of the Oregon revised statute one ninety-two dot six-six-zero-two A.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion we'd like to do on that?
I would. We do need to make sure before we vote that we ask for public comment.
Thank you. So, before we vote, is there anybody would like to have public comment? Would you like to have public comments? You just showed up. About anybody online? Would anybody online like to have public comment about our process and procedures that we're doing for selecting our new city manager? Isaac.
Actually, it was the same comment. I just wanted to make sure we left a moment to have available for public comment, but we already executed that. Thank you.
So having hearing no public comment, we have a motion in a second. We've had our discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carried. So we'll go on to our next piece of action. Item matter will be the executive session. We're going to go into executive session O R S one ninety-two point six-six-zero two A, city manager recruitment, selection of semifinalists, and we're just going to pause our city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can you announce when you think you'll be back so that everybody can rejoin?
I would say no later than seven.
And everybody, everybody on Zoom get that? If you could return at seven, we'll come back from executive session.
Sorry, Mr. Schreger. Did you know we were going to executive session? All right, we're going to resume our city council meeting. We just came out of executive session, and we need to make a couple of decisions. First decision will be on the time that we're going to meet on.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's under other business.
Is that other business?
Yes.
And we don't do that after we come out?
Yeah.
Why don't we do it now?
It's just other business.
Or other business.
Then we're to be counting.
Well, then we need to talk about the the number, when you decide the number of candidates that we're going to have. And that was the second decision we made.
So I guess what I would say, we went through the semifinalists and we've chosen twelve candidates to push to the next step.
Is that what we're agreeing on? Do we need to have a motion on that? Do you think we need to have a motion on the number or just come to an agreement that that's the number that we're going to have?
I don't think you need an official action for that.
So we just, do we agree on the twelve?
Yes.
Okay, so we came to an agreement on twelve candidates for our city manager. All right, so we'll go to approval of minutes November eighth, twenty twenty-two, our regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a correction on page five. Second paragraph under city manager report. I had written that city manager pay group said that the city is out for bid on the walking path on northeast Columbia, and it actually was the D C B A that was out for bid.
Okay, so we make that note, correction noted. Isaac.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve November eighth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes with revisions made by city.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Either or, you can choose.
Give it to Leslie.
Is there any questions about that? Any questions or comments we have for that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rearrange presentation, Harp County District Attorney, Justin Nelson.
I saw it on the, oh. Oh, my turn.
We moved it on here. You can hear. I think it might still be on, but it's not.
Everyone turns it off.
Noises.
Can I try it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it says on my stuff.
Okay.
Testing testing.
Oh, there you go.
Nope, you said.
I was thinking weird noises while you guys were.
I don't know.
Maybe.
On the agenda, talking about a presentation, sometimes that's like a PowerPoint presentation, documentation, and all you've got to me. So I apologize for that. It is not much of a presentation. It's me trying to abuse myself, really. I mean, that's the aspect is it. I remember back when I came to this attorney about ten, and the A C S County City Council are different. This is how it's growing, evolving, and a new face is coming in. So I used to apologize for first not being here sooner, not being on a regular basis. And something I should be doing and would be open to doing, you know, and I think when you have questions about what's going on for criminal law prosecutions that are maybe not happening. I mean, you know your law enforcement. You know the chief. You know what former police departments are doing. They're doing good work. You might have questions. What happens afterwards? What happens after the arrest? Why do you see a person without arrest and now back on the streets? Those questions should come to me. You should be able to ask me and have that reach, you know, reach out and say, hey, Justin, what is going on? Or what is not happening? And why is that? So I want pass around my card so you can call. I mean, you represent the city. People look to you. They first, they might not reach out to me, but they might reach out to you first. As a city councillor, as a mayor, asking what's going on. So I'm glad you have that information. Blame me, that works, right? That's not a problem at all. And that's kind of really the introduction here. A little bit about myself. For those who don't know me, many of you don't. I'm born and raised in World County. My father passed away. He's a fourth generation wheat farmer. Dry land wheat, about five thousand acres out by Ione. He graduated Island High School. Now he went to Oregon State. I end up going to Hepner. So I graduated Hepner High School. They all through school the whole time. Went to Oregon State. At that time, I thought I was going to be an ad. As a farmer, I realized I wasn't much of a farmer because I didn't like getting dirty as much. Like I have PTSD memories. My father, on a combine, when he got clawed up underneath the combine, opening it up, and we chapped just covering him. It was a hundred degree weather outside. That stuff is itchy. It is dirty. I remember him stripping down, pretty much stripping all the way down. Brought you it off, putting it back on, and working the rest of the day. And in that moment, I realized, you know, maybe this isn't for me. Maybe that's not my type of, I'm not as tough as he was. So, but I love agriculture. I love this community. I always want to live here. And so that's where I decided, well, maybe ad business. You know, going in, working for World County Grain Growers Cooperative, anything like that. So that's why I went to add the where you say here. My degree is in ad business. My minor is in natural resource environmental law and policy. And during that time is why I fell in love with the law. But I thought, you know, maybe I could do environmental law here. Water law, you know, land use law, things like that. So I went to law school. Now, went to Alaman over in Salem. Graduated there and wanted to come back, and that's where a position came open in Yumitila County at the district attorney's office. So I started there in two thousand and seven. I have to thank former Judge Jeff Walbuss. He was also my Cub Scout leader when he was the V A of World County. And he made a good word in for Dean Gushblatt at the time with district attorney, Yumitila County, said, hey, you should really hire this guy. And of course, being as smart as you get, the times like, yeah, I'm not going to turn down the judge. So luckily I got that position and worked in Yumitila County, but always when I moved back and started working, I lived in World County. I lived in our original homestead house. The house was built in nineteen oh three. The same house that my son is being, is in right now is the same room my dad had growing up. My daughter's the same room as my aunt's. So that's what I love about this community. But I also realized, you know, putting it back here too, even growing up is honestly that divide sometimes between the north end of the county and the south end. Divide as in you don't communicate sometime. And I thought about growing up myself. You know, I realized, gosh, when I was growing up, I didn't go to Wardenirian much. I go to Hermison one way. I went to Portland, but I have it the other way. And that's one thing I definitely hope to do in district attorney is try to combine that again. We're a combined county. This is Moro County, not north and south end. Okay, and so that's a priority, and that's when I became district attorney. Me making sure, I was lucky. I was blessed, actually, as the writer, when I started. Hired Richard Tubb. He graduated, and he's from the Wardenirian area, and he came back from Coos County and worked with the area. We opened up an office, and we worked in the office in Boardman there, and that was his primary office. And so we continue to do that. We wanted to still have somebody here, and so World County opened up our new office in here again, and so we were moved over there. But still, it's important to have representation in the World County District Attorney's Office in the northern county. You know, a lot of our crime happens in the north end. We have victims up here. So we need to have personnel, people here to help, meet with individuals, victims, talk with them. We use that office quite a bit. I appreciate Chief Stokoe's really made. Here we have a new office. We made a priority work on getting a video conference set up for testimony for grand jury. Different court of care and stuff. And I appreciate the fact that we got this set up here. I don't know. See, this is the issue. It's going to be good. I know. And so that's the priority, make sure as accessible as possible for individuals. As an example, for grand jury, every time you would need to come down to Hepner to testify in person. But I started to realize you didn't have to. The important thing is that you have to go like here and see the person. I am laughing. That's one thing I got from my father, is to laugh, okay? And that is one of the things, we set the video. So a victim who lives in Wardenirian doesn't have to drive all the way down, take two or three hours or more of their day off of work. And be victimized again, right? You're losing money from your job. You know, you're losing time driving down. And so we've set that up, be able to use that. We've had victims here testify from the Warden Police Department. Yeah, this is before Zoom. We were using public call. We had that set up here. It was a benefit for law enforcement. They probably makes sense to most folks, but crime happens at night. All right, it happens quite often at night. That means a law enforcement officer who's investigating it from a night shift. So what I'm trying to tell them to come in, oh, just come in at nine o'clock. It'll be simple. That's when they're sleeping, okay? That's when they're sleeping normally. And so we can have it where they don't have to drive as far. Trying to help save money even for overtime, making sure a tired officer isn't driving long distances, trying to make a workout. So I appreciate that work of the Warden Police Department really has helped to better serve, you know, folks in northern county. So it's been beneficial. It's a little bit easier now. Yeah, everyone's using Zoom, so we can use that more. But we were doing that way before COVID, before Zoom started, started being used. So it's been, it's been a good situation, you know? So I really again wanted to use myself and be open to questions. If you have any questions right now, feel free to ask. But if you have questions afterwards, you have my card. Email me, call me, tell me to come up here again and talk. I'll do it. You know, if at a certain point you want me on an agenda every couple of months or whatever it is, I'll do it. There are certain cases, I can't always talk about in detail certain cases, but I can talk about. Sometimes you might say, hey, Justin, on this case, why did this person get probation? You know, this is a serious matter to the city. What happened here? And I'll explain my rationale. You might not agree, but I'll explain my rationale. I might also explain that we're limited, just like law enforcement is limited. Also prosecution is limited by the wording law themselves. You know, there's a sentencing guidelines. We can't go outside of it. You know, there's certain limitations we have. And so while I would love us in a person in prison for certain offenses, I can't always do it. We are limited. So it's also not always the judge for song. Sometimes they are, they're limited the same way prosecutors are. So, any questions for me right now? Oh, good. Yes. Absolutely. Please, you start it going, start the ball rolling, we'll give you more questions.
So have you hired an assistant?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Yes, we did. We were able to hire, so Richard, tell me if you didn't know. I knew Richard, but I'm new to it. We'll get a job, and we're closer to home in Hermiston. We moved there. Everybody's looking there. He's the city attorney for Hermiston. Their first in-house city attorney. So we lost him, gosh, back then in last September, it's a while. And had our job open for a while, but also realized we kind of were hoping to try to find a personal experience. And just like I'm sure the city is having a hard time, anyone owns a business realizing it's not easy getting employees. It's very difficult even finding prosecutors, just like it's hard, I know, for the county to find nurses, for hospitals to find nurses. Prosecutors and attorneys in general, very difficult. But we were lucky. Recently here in end of June or July, we hired Zach Williams. He was a prosecutor over in Yumitila County. So there's a lot of benefit to that because we're in the same, even though it's Yumitila County, we are in the same judicial district, circuit courts. When you vote for a judge in a circuit court, moral and Yumitila votes are combined to elect that judge. There's a lot of value in having a attorney. We've already worked with the same judges we work with. And so having that over two years of more experience has been very beneficial already. He's able to hit the ground running, no time for, for training. I know he's been, and he loves the criminal law. I mean, he really does. And I think he's, was already come by, came by former P D, talked to the chief. I think he's definitely makes himself available for phone calls. And helps out a lot. So definitely, we were lucky to hire him, and it's been beneficial so far. I think the law enforcement have enjoyed working with him. Because he does love the criminal law, and he likes working with the law enforcement. Chief, can you speak to that? Have you had any good contact with him?
He's a ten. You know, he obviously, we have a lot going on and Justin's busy, and so some of the cases that kind of got put on the back show are getting prosecuted now. He's, he's a ten. He meets with the officers on a regular basis, asks questions, is involved with them. Yeah, he's been a great addition to Justin's team. So we're fortunate to have.
But it's great to hear, and I think you're absolutely right when you mentioned getting through some of the older cases. They get backlogged, right? You know, since I started, you've always been office of one process, one district attorney, then one W D A. That's I became district attorney in two thousand and ten. And law enforcement agencies have grown. There's more police officers, I believe, in Boardman and also the sheriff's office has more deputies. And I would say it doesn't mean there may be always more crime occurring, there's more criminals being caught. You can understand what I'm saying. You have more people hot out of patrol. They're going to catch more individuals. You're going to catch that traffic offense drug driver, drug driver, which might lead to other charges too. So just having more law enforcement out there, you're going to catch more individuals, solve more crime, and that leads to more cases. And so it's other than busy for us, but we're doing very good so far with it, and I'm very happy to say we're getting caught up by them. Because that was an issue, absolutely. And all the work law enforcement does, your city police department here, the long hours they put in, they need some finality also for cases. And so it's good for them to be able to look and say, hey, all that work I did wasn't created for nothing. And I'm happy Zach is reaching out to them and talking to them. He's trying to explain that again. We get a police report usually. Right? We read the story. But you want to talk to the person who lived, that's the victim, that's the officer who kind of painted that whole picture. So I'm happy he's reaching out to law enforcement, trying to get more information that might not be in the police report. Right? Have that officer paint that picture, tell that story. Any other questions? If not, I'm still here. I'm going to stay here the rest of the meeting. So if you want to ask any questions one-on-one, I'll be here after immediately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, district attorney. We'll move on to the financial for month ending October twenty twenty-two.
Yes. For those of you who helped sign checks, you notice, you might remember you were signing lots of big ones. That was mainly due to our geo bond, water and wastewater projects. Those are going pretty smoothly. We don't have anything that is a serious concern with the schedule. Cost is a different thing, but schedule-wise, we're pretty much on track. So you can see down there in fund four-ten, one million, three hundred, four thousand is what went out for those projects. And that is both of those combined, water and wastewater. That's all the geo bond. And the other big expense is out of the building fund, all of the I G A payments that the building fund sends out, out of the five hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-nine thousand was in I G A fees.
We just wanted to show you that this time we had a lot of where we finished up the loop road, generally, we hold back the retainage. So it was time to pay that. I mean, it was. Were you finished?
No, I was going to say that. My other two funds are the sewer reserve, the street reserve, because we had sewer project go into the Laurel Lane Loop Road. That's why it's in the two funds. But we did get a hundred thousand from the small cities allotment from ODOT for that project. And that one we received in November because we had to pay out the final retainage and prove that we were done and submit that to the state, to ODOT, so that we could get that grant.
Did you have anything to add?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add, why I wanted to say this, is I don't remember when we have been in, and you didn't ask about why we had spent more this month than we had taken in, which is really unusual because we normally but we just had all those bills to catch up on closing out all the other projects. And so this is a month where you will see that we spent more than we took in, which is and that's the reason.
Well, and based on the geo bond, we already got all that money upfront, so we won't see that money coming in, but you'll see it going out.
Any other questions for the financial director? Thank you. How did you comment? Mr. Coleman, I see that you figured, fill that paper. It is your time.
All right, thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Rose. Rose is very nice. All right, and so the first thing I want to say, I guess I haven't been communicating all the issues that I have been having with the city and trying to get things resolved. I want to go over just ten that I just came up with at the top of my head here in the last, you know, hour. Right now, my property is being eminent domain, and to me, the frustration that I have is the city lied about a permit that they needed to the P U C. I brought this up four or five different times, and it's caused great heartache to me. It's actually valued my property. I also have a loop road case with Luban that's going to the circuit court. That is going to be costly to the citizens taxpayers when it can be easily settled. Okay? Me and my business has had complaints and investigations, one on my chickens and also my gazebos. Both I found that the procedures and protocols have not been followed, which has been very, very disheartening to try to get information on why they haven't been followed. Harassment by public officials, being told that I need to leave meetings and having the cops being called on me when I bring up legitimate concerns about illegal meetings, all right, that are being done. But more ethics complaints will be filed on those as well, too. And also bogus investigations with no evidence that are still open today. All right. Contented court charge that has been dismissed and a police report that is unfounded by the police department here at Boardman. I've been stonewalled on five different cases for public records requests. I still haven't got any information, and all I get, oh, we'll get to it. We'll get to it. We'll get to it. Also, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, publicly stating that you could care less about my property and to have you apologize, but then still don't want to meet up and negotiate this proving that you were never really sorry about it to begin with by the property and still doing nothing with your actions. I haven't failed at anything except showing that there is no justice for these, for these things and these charges that, and following the same rules and procedures the city expects us citizens to follow. I've been a victim of crimes and I've dropped all charges. I still welcome working together, all right? Being involved in the process. I know it's nitty gritty. I know it's conflicting, okay? But we have to work together going forward, and the things that have been said about me have been libelous and slanderous, okay? And I, my patience is growing further, and I'm sorry if that frustration comes out at you, but I want to get these things resolved. Let's resolve these things together. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody online that would like to have public comment? All right, having hearing nothing, we'll move on to action items, resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, building department fees.
All right, so that me. So basically what Building Code Amendment has done is changed the rules on some things, which is not uncommon. But that kind of changes how we do business. So we had to change a couple of forms. One of the things is that a couple of the fees that we weren't capturing will now be captured. So, you guys know where this is at? So after my memo, the next three pages are the changes. To the Schreger, you remove practical pricing. The underground fire, fresh water, which is done, and then we change the, or they changed our, we adapted by changing solar installation. Because the solar installation is prescriptive, it's a flat fee. But if it's not prescriptive, ask the engineer, let us pay some value.
When you say the solar installation, that the path is prescriptive, what does that mean?
If it's prescriptive, it's right out of the code book, because residential code book is like a recipe book, and you follow the recipe, you've met the code. The commercial code is not so much like that. It's set up for engineers. So if it's right out of the code book, they have a free date checklist, you check it, and if you answer no to your question, you're no longer prescribed. I guess that's not in here.
The checklist is not in here, no.
I was curious, because I had to put on my house, and I had to have two people check it. I think I had somebody from Yumitila and you.
So, yeah.
So, but, so.
Basically, if it's prescriptive, the structure that's going on can handle the extra weight. Like manufactured homes never be. Those always have to be.
Right, I had to have something additional.
Yeah, to evaluate the structure, make sure it's uh.
But don't you have to do that on any house?
Not if it's uh trusses or stiff built raptors. There they have determined that that's adequate to hold the weight, just not a lot of weight.
Right, it's just you're adding stuff.
Right, and a manufactured home, those raptors are. And ground mount solar assembly would not be.
That'd have different fee put on it.
Then the permit fee is based on the value of project.
So everything that you're adding to this is highlighted in red.
Yes.
We're updating the.
Well, we're updating, we're re adopting all the fees. Just because in the future, if we're going back, if somebody's going back and looking at the progress of what's happening. If we just do these two things here and we have to. But it's a lot simpler, cleaner, just to adapt. Everything all over again and I do send those ones.
All right, does anybody uh have any questions for? Any questions? All right, I'll entertain motion.
I moved your group resolution twenty one twenty. Two thousand twenty two, a resolution establishing building permits for destructive permits issued, adopting state of Oregon building valuation data. By reference and repealing resolution twenty five dash one thousand twenty.
Okay, I have motion to second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any folks? Resolution. Twenty two, two thousand twenty two, contingency funds transfer.
Yes, that's me again. Um. As some of the systems that we have for water and wastewater, um, get up their image, um, some of the parts to repair it become obsolete. And then we have to replace the whole thing. And this was the instance with the SCADA system, um, we had to have it replaced. Um, and. It was one of those that was unforeseen. We didn't know it was gonna go out and that the parts were obsolete. So, um. I request that you approve this move uh where we will reduce twenty thousand out of contingency in the water reserve fund. And move it over to capital outlay to cover uh the cost of the SCADA system.
Well, then I'd like to move to approve resolution twenty two dash twenty twenty two. A budget resolution decrease contingency and increase. Twenty twenty two from the front three expenditures per tubal.
Right, the motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I was just gonna think it's financial, do you have to do real call? Um, that that's a rule that you guys said it's not. I'm just.
Yeah, I did that when we were on. Before we. Junior, you had a.
I was gonna make a motion or whatever you did right then.
I apologize. Didn't see the link in my. Okay, so we had an uh, all in favor said aye. Aye, and were there any opposed? There is none opposed, yeah. Other business. This is where you guys want to totally act like this. January City Council meeting day. And that's okay. So. We need to decide on a time that we want to meet. If it leaves the ten. At the date.
Well, the scheduled day is the third, so.
Was it the third or was?
The scheduled day is the third, that's the typical day, so we would be changing it.
To the ten.
To the ten, that's the. We have, we're asking you to not have your regular meeting on the third because. City Hall will be closed on Monday, so. Move it to the ten. And uh, then you we will need to decide. If we start early that night.
For the time, so Junior, you're recognized now.
The mayor, I, uh, we would change our January. Normal meeting to January tenth from January third and with the uh. Stuff we have to discuss, I even knew that we started that meeting at six P M. Seconded. I heard a move.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second. Well, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
That's what Mark said.
Is that what we want? Six o'clock? Six P M it is. You mark that down there. Police report.
Uh, you're back, you should have a a copy of the police report for the month of December. Um, again, we're staying steadily busy. Obviously, weather is coming into play. I would remind everybody on the council as I with the public. Uh, this is the time of year that the terminals shop for their families at your expense, so. Keep an eye on your place and your neighbors. If you see anything suspicious, please call. Um, if it doesn't look right, we would much rather go and not be needed than to be. Um, and I would remind everybody, a lot of people are receiving packages. Uh, the sooner you get those picked up, the safer you are. Um, last year, we had FedEx driver actually be alert. They saw somebody following him around. And then um, some packages come up missing, so she called us and we were able to get them. Uh, that's the kind of thing that, you know, is gonna help us, so just know that Christmas, the holiday seasons are upon us and that's when the. Easy payments.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess they were my school.
You know, if your business allows you to send packages to your place of work, the the less you have out in the public, the better off you're gonna be. I'm not suggesting that you send to your businesses, but. But I did, the less you could do at your front door, the safer you are. Um, so. Any questions on that report? Um. Uh, uh, I I do wanna let everybody know that uh. We've been looking to fill uh our our officer position for about eight months now. Um, we were hoping to get a lateral, um, that did not happen. Um, we went through a testing process, interview phase and uh extended an offer to. Uh, a Riverside graduate, um. His name is Jason Navarro, um. Good young man, we we offered him a position. He started with us on the twenty eighth. But this month, we are excited to have him aboard. Um, unfortunately though, we can't send him to the academy. I think as soon as we can get him to the academy is in June. So, um, if we're lucky. They might have an opening coming before that, but it's June at least. So unfortunately, it'll be about a year, almost two years before they're really ready to go on their own. Just because of staffing choices at the academy and and not having the funding.
So his partner is somebody.
So he'll be, he. We have our policy manuals, about a thousand pages long. And that's what he's been doing for the last few weeks, is reading policy. And then as he can, he gets to go out with the officers and. Um, we gotta make sure we're getting his his safety equipment. The vests take about eight weeks to get here if we're lucky. Um. Supply chain, just like everything else, but uh. Um, so he's going to be riding with the officers and giving some seat time before he goes to the academy. Um, the only other thing I think uh I I I'll just bring uh attention to is uh. Officer Steinberg is getting to the. To the point in his career, he's going to retire. Um, we think we have about a year with him, uh, which means that I'm gonna lose my S R O. Um, we put a a letter of interest, uh, our soliciting letter of interest from uh officers in house. We'll go through a process, see if there's somebody that can go through the assessment center and take on that position. Um, but we would really like that person to train with George. Um, during that time, uh, because if he does leave, he's gonna leave mid school year. Um, so. Um. We're probably gonna have to fill that position. Um, which means I'm gonna have an extra body for six, nine months. Um, I'm hoping. Hoping to get cres funds to help cover that. Um, and if that does happen, then we'll bring that person up fairly soon. Um. Which means if it's somebody, one of my, one of my staff inside, then that means I got another position I gotta fill. Uh, and that position's federal, so it's a lot of work trying to find people. Really tough. Anyway, uh, we're excited to have Jason on board. Uh, I will get you before the city council. Uh, and when we get to meet him and he doesn't get what he's gotta talk to you, so. That's part of my. Part of my. Spiel is they need to learn how to speak to the public, so. Um, he's doing a great job so far, I'm pretty excited.
I don't believe I've seen him since he was in third grade, so.
That's all I got.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Building Department.
We're just kinda. Going down. The whole plan is going down. Yes. Rapid fires they have. So, I don't wanna do it like that. So, speaking of, um. Can't ask me to read this up, I don't know if I did before. Speaking of getting good people, I think I talked about this before. I put out a uh citywide invitation and letter of interest. Become a building inspector and the person who. Uh, only person who wrote the letter was Jose Fernandez and. He's right now in the process of being initiated. Become a building inspector, um, mostly. The whole plan is just to, for like him to return, to make sure somebody here takes on call. But uh, he's gonna be working actively as a building inspector. In next summer and then in the three, in the following summer. Plan is to put him on full time. And he has one more final exam for this term and he's got straight A's, so. Very hard.
So he won't be at our Christmas party because that's when he has his final.
Good job.
Good job, thank. Congratulations.
All right, I don't see any question.
What about the expansion?
Oh, we have a pre-construction meeting with our select contractor Thursday. And then we're gonna go over. Schedule and. All that fun, happy stuff. So it's, I don't, it depends on their schedule is when they're gonna start. They're the better, as far as I was saying. But uh, yeah.
Any questions you can say about public work department?
Well, you can see they've been busy the last two days or three days, but they've. Done a nice job, man, keeping our streets uh safe. And uh, if you, he, the reports in here, uh. You know, it's always amazing how many uh, cause we're up to a thousand nineteen meters red. Uh, I don't think it was a year or so ago, it was like along in the eight hundred and somethings, so yeah, that you can. And then I'll go into the population thing when I do mine.
I think it's interesting, they spend three days sweeps, street sweeping throughout town and then dump gravel.
And you know, when they do sweep the streets after the snow. A lot of times we'll go and like up behind C and D where those big divots are uh because of the trucks. You know, we'll try to fill those kinds of places in, you know, because and we can, we, it's better there than it is just all the way up to the. Lagoon or something, so, yeah. And it doesn't take long for them to. It just felt like they won't fill it up for you.
Is there a timeframe on when the new uh sign will be, or it will have a sign back up in the boardman? Have they given us a timeframe? So. The ones.
I don't know, we've got a timeframe. We've called and gotten the estimate, but I.
Oh, somebody fixed it?
Yes, it has to be.
Oh, the sign, but I never saw it, it was quickly gone, so.
Yeah, so we're working uh, um. The individual that hit it was arrested, uh. Um, the vehicle was a rental vehicle and so we put the police department has been in contact with the rental company. Trying to get that insurance information to fix the sign. Um, damage is a little more, eleven thousand dollars to replace that sign, so. We're trying to get them to pay for it.
All right, it's automatic. Should I be automatic?
There's nothing on that.
I mean, either the insurance company pays it or the dude that drew it hit it.
Yeah, but they don't have any money.
Who doesn't have any money?
No, you have to have insurance in order to get the, get a. If he was the actual person in the skin part, there's, if he's on rental contract, there's several things that can then play.
So the rental car place is not on the.
They will, while we're trying to get them to pay. Just whether or not they. Um, and I can tell you, that's like a job for Mr. Nelson. That's the only simple thing, but for restitution. Or restitution, we're getting uh, we're we're getting checks, two dollars sometimes, sometimes fifteen dollars.
Dollar, twenty nine dollars is like the highest.
On on other cases, so it takes a long time to use restitution to get paid. So, yes, it is being worked on. And uh, um. Hopefully soon.
Here or that, or we just pay it and when we get it fit, when we get reimbursed, whenever. That's another avenue, just pay, get fixed. Uh, committee reports. Having hearing then? City manager. Is there kind of a speech?
Well, uh. I I wrote, I I put in your packet something about the population figures. Because I was astounded when we got the new figures from P S U and we had went down. And so I sent my email off to. Lady I know down there and she said that because the census was so poor. In twenty twenty. That they have adjusted, you know, because. We go, when P S U comes out to our area. There's a delegation of us from the county and the city and here again. That go and really pressure them into saying. Here, let 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 me explain to you how much we're growing. And, you know, so like you say, we've done, we've done a pretty good job. We were up to forty five something. And now we're down to forty sixteen, one hundred sixteen, so this. We're. We're gonna keep working on this, but it was really discouraging uh to, because so many, if you're looking at uh. You know, trying to cite businesses here, it looks really poorly for your census to go down when all of us that live here. Know that is not the case, so you know.
Next crisis too.
Yes, it's lots of, it's.
How about two trips from one side of town to the other side of town, not passing more than two miles? Taking the better part of an hour. And as you stop trying to make a left turn for ten minutes and traffic packed up on the freeway.
My, uh, now that you bring that up, uh, the uh. Kelson uh called me today and has had a family emergency because he said. When I called him a couple of weeks ago that he'd have our report by the end of November. And anyway, he's. Having a terrible time in his life right now, and so we'll try to get us to, he's back on task, he said, and so we'll try to get it. Ask us in a couple of more weeks, so. But, um. Yeah, it's, it's always a. Yeah, it's, it's always, uh. B C D A, uh. They did go out for their bid, and, uh. He wants to start on January the ninth, so that's, uh. We'll hope the weather gets better by January. Uh, the CREST meeting has been scheduled for the twenty-second of January. No, of December.
December, December.
Yeah.
It was decided when, after you do it, then it was like. It just came up yesterday.
Yes, yeah, I just wrote down the wrong number.
No, you, you wrote, you wrote for five, you had twenty-second or twenty-fifth. But it just got decided. Yesterday. Or today, whether it's.
I, I volunteered to have the small cities, uh, meeting here, Boardman. So I think we'll have it at the senior center. This year, this time, we, we've had it here, but if. The weather's good and people come, this is a pretty small room for twenty or twenty-five people to eat lunch and do a program. So I thought maybe we'd try to go and have it over at the senior center. Cause we've had it at the rec center and, you know, so it's nice to feel other places around.
Are you gonna have the senior center cooked for them?
Yes, I think I will. Because they said they're, wanna do catering again now, so. And that makes it really nice because. We eat a working lunch, we don't, uh. You know, stop necessarily.
Yeah.
And, uh. So, did we decide if we want to have the candidates forum? On, at the end of January, or do we wanna push it to the first of the next week? In January.
It was, it was in discussion, we think, that's in last side anyway.
I think, I think the, the second, third is, that's your option.
Well, no, it's gonna have to be Jan, well, this is just, it should be the fifth and sixth. You can't go by anything I say. Do you know what I tell you?
No, it didn't work that way, sorry.
No, I think, I think this, uh, this calendar says. The fifth and sixth. Is it a twenty twenty-three calendar?
That's gonna, that's gonna be the Saturday, Monday.
I'm doing, I'm January, sorry.
February, February, second and third would be a third calendar, right?
That's okay, I want it to be.
That'll be September, second and third.
Yeah.
January.
Yeah, yes, that's what I was.
And that changes it from the twenty-seventh?
Oh, January.
Yes.
Well, because the original calendar is that.
Well, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, yeah, cause then we'll start, we'll make arrangements to have the meeting.
So remember the twenty-seventh to the second, or.
Yes.
I'll be there.
Okay, well, this, this will be, you know, uh, important to meet whoever comes, we, you know, whatever, however many the last finalists. Will be, so that we get a feel for them.
Do we want to contact the formal reserve, the room?
You know, we, you know, we will do that, okay, perfect. Yeah.
Well, that will be for candidates, but. How many are we gonna decide that, bringing in and where?
The finalists.
Right, that would line a number of the finalists that we decide later.
Yeah.
For the finalists to be entered.
And just, uh. Maybe I'll pass this around, uh, Anderson Perry sends out their new calendar. And Boardman's in it, and this is our loop, uh, robe, but it's a nice, like, aerial shot. From a drone, so you can see what it really looked like. So. So I had a calendar, I just didn't know what that.
Which month did you get?
I think other than that, um, like you say. Well, yes, it looks nice, that picture, because you can see how nice that pavement looks out there, yeah.
And I, and I like the, the, made the radial wider than the rest of the road, there's big trucks that kinda goes.
Yeah, it's never ever, no, we, we try to. Take the things ahead of time so fast. And, uh, you see, we turned our Christmas lights on, I think, on the first, and all the guys that were busy as could be, so. And I think other than that, our construction projects all seem to be going pretty well. You know, uh.
We've got a picture of nobody going the wrong way.
Well, and that's.
That was very smart.
It was hard to hit that time.
Now, I would have wanted to get, and, yeah, they go that way. Yeah, well, ironic enough.
And the Christmas party, don't forget, will be Thursday night. Uh, I know some of you have Christmas programs, but it's come late. I mean, cause it's a buffet, I mean, I think, and so.
Yeah, then I might talk to them, all right?
Oh, yeah.
I definitely would.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's not, we're not very bus, we're not. We're not too high flues.
I have a question for you.
Uh huh.
So I saw this minus tavern bar.
We haven't talked to them yet. Uh, I think they maybe sent out the. Notice today, that, because. They, they will need, they didn't get a permit, so they'll need to come into touch with, you know, to Carla about how many parking spots they'll end up, and. If they have a survey. Of where the property lines are.
That was my other concern.
Cause it, you know, just because. We've all lived here and think that they're here, doesn't make it so we find out.
Well, I guess my, my com- thought process is, is. If they didn't follow the rule, but how do we? Help them? Follow the rules? Without.
Yeah.
Being a butt head to our, uh.
No, we're.
You know, business that's in our community. You know, it would be really bad if they took, but you put the post in the wrong spot, I'm just. You know? And then they have to move them.
Well, that's true, but.
I'm just saying, I'm, good luck to you, and I think for each, uh, good, uh. Public relations, that's all I really wanted to.
No, I think so, and I think we're trying really hard, because there's no reason. I think, and the fence, you know, there's a height restriction too, and so, and particularly up there, that's gonna be an issue.
And the property is on the opposite, or this would be the we- the west side of their fence, who owns the parking lot, is that city?
I think this is the city, yeah, eat right away.
Right away that allows.
It parks those parking spots. But. Parking. Parking's gonna become an issue in Boardman, I figure. Because of the fact that we don't have enough off-street parking. And. We've got so many more people. You know, that, you know, like used to be, you park in. The pharmacy park now, to run get your mail. Well, now the Ace Hardware has business, uh, you know what I mean, that. That you, you know, you don't feel right. If, if you're not going into the hardware too.
Yeah, just do both.
Huh?
Just do both, that's what I did, did it twice today. Because the post house was close.
But, yeah, so, you know, it's, everywhere is gonna get to be. More. Looking at parking, thank you. And, you know, we've had advertised for a senior planner or planner associate. On Indeed and LinkedIn, we've gotten six or seven. Out of each. Place. Most of them are, you know, just looking. They're not looking for this job, they're just looking for any job, so we'll kinda.
So, do you have any other questions for Mr. Preger?
I, I do, um, I, I was wondering if you wanted to try to talk about the retreats. Because, yes, I, I'm out of town, January's winter, for a second, and we're, a couple of us are doing the training in nineteen.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's part of why I wanted to see if you thought you had any time at all, because.
And then the only other thing I was gonna say, if I spent the better part of an hour today on the phone with a place, uh, with a person from Indeed. And we finessed the job description to try to get more quality candidates. So I don't know if that would help you. I will give you a phone number.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And we'll see, so like you say, if we didn't wanna do a retreat on the. We don't wanna do one on the fourteenth, because, uh. Martin Luther King's Day is on the sixteenth, and so everybody likes to have a long holiday that weekend. So it was down to the twenty-second or the twenty-eighth. And really, uh.
If we did the twenty-eighth, then the very next weekend, or the next Thursday, Friday, we're doing our, yeah, our event. No, I think not, but.
No, it's, and like you say, the tenth, we start at six. You know, it's. Our calendars quickly fill up here, that's why I wanted you to think about it a little bit. And as far as I'm concerned, you can think about it a little bit more, because. I could probably do a retreat with, you know, like a week or two notice.
I can make twenty-eight for it. It's in the morning, right?
Yeah.
I can make the morning work. Four hours in the morning, right, looking for five hours?
Yeah.
It helps the second, I could do that as well, I mean, I have a flexible schedule, so that.
Did you say the what?
I can do that as well, twenty-eight. I, I have a flexible schedule, so it's easy for me to kind of.
Okay. So, anyway.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, we'll move on to that. Counselor comments.
Thank the girl department for putting that some sand on the bottom of the policy group. It doesn't look like much of a hill until you're slapping. Damn it.
It's really slick out there tonight, if you know that.
It embarrassed me.
It was like, I saw that just right in the corner over here, I mean. Gonna be all the intersections, but it got really slick tonight.
So public works without diligently trying to get the slush off, because that's what's gonna make it slick and.
It freezes, and it's gonna be what it is, but it, it is just, I mean, they've done a real good job. Uh, my daughter made a comment, I know this is council comments, but. Uh, the sidewalks are cleaning the roads, and I, I told her, I said, well, duh. It's easier to clean sidewalks when nobody walks on it. And red roads, it's like, it's harder to get the stuff off this path, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, they can't run that blade on the pavement, if they do, it just pairs it up forward, so they have feet that. That that blade runs on, keep it up enough that it doesn't be digging. They'll let it melt it off today, but. Hopefully, this.
Yeah, it's more better with, with, no. It's getting nervous and sort of get a bump outside, right outside, right. And you know, I was telling them the soapbox, cause they hit that bump, it's just okay, like boom, but. Sorry, I get what you're saying, they can't go down, they're gonna get it off, but. Any other council comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna stay, um. Relating with my time with y'all, and although my term ends at the end of the month, thank you very much for the opportunity. Being and learning a whole lot here, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah. Volunteering and stuff, now that's been great.
My pleasure.
Well, that's true.
Blow in to the most of them.
The mayor has no comments this meeting is your right here.